Good morning and welcome to the City Rapid City Planning Commission meeting for February 9th, 2017. If any member of the audience wish to speak to an item on the agenda, there are speaker request forms on the table along the left wall. Please fill out the request with the agenda number of the item you wish to speak to and hand it to the staff seated on the left of the dais. At this time, we'd also like to ask that if any member of the audience has a cellphone or other electronic device, that you either turn it off or turn the ringer to silent. If you need to take a call, please step out to the hallway so that the meeting is not disrupted. Items one through seven have been placed on the consent calendar and may be approved as a group. Action will be taken on all consent items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration at this time. The findings of this planning commission are recommendations to the city council. The city council will make the final decision with the exception of the following items. Item five seventeen PD zero zero two, item six sixteen UR zero zero two. The Rapid City Planning Commission's actions on these items are final unless any party appeals that decision to the Rapid City Council. All appeals must be submitted in writing to the Community Planning and Development Services Department by close of business on the seventh full calendar day following action by the planning commission. Are there any items one through seven that staff would like removed? Any items one through seven, I guess, one and four through seven that the planning commissioners would like removed? And are there any items one or four through seven that the audience members would like removed for any reason? Hanny? Two and three, we got those, okay. Seeing no other ones, I'd look for a motion to approve item one and items four through seven per staff recommendations. Galen made the motion, Karen seconded that motion. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed? The motion carries. Item two?
I can't hear it.
Let's try again, how's that, okay. Item two is a preliminary subdivision plan to create two lots located in the southeast corner of East St. Patrick Street and South Valley Drive. It is known as Phase One A of a development to be known as Johnson Ranch Subdivision. The development as a total will include a little over forty-eight acres and it'll be a combination of commercial and residential development. The next item is an annexation. There's a portion of the property that we will go through here in a moment that is currently located outside the city limits and that request is to annex the balance of that into the city limits. Okay. Let's try this. It looks good on my screen. There we go, thank you, Rob. This is an aerial of Phase One A of the property. As you can see, it's currently undeveloped. That's East St. Patrick Street to the north, South Valley Drive to the west. The future land use plan shows that the forty-eight acres that we will be discussing as a part of the master plan is identified as low-density neighborhood on the city's future land use plan. The major street plan identifies South Valley Drive as a collector street and then East St. Patrick Street to the north, South Dakota Highway forty-four to the northeast, and then Elkvale Road and its loop-de-loop somewhat to the east are all identified as arterial streets and all of those streets abut the forty-eight acres. Let me, that's okay if we just stay on this one. This is a layout of the development as a whole. The red is the commercial development that would be along the arterial streets to the north and then you see the orange which is multifamily and then the balance of that is going to be some residential development. We're really encouraged with this project as a whole. We've had an opportunity to meet with the developer a couple of times, including the Parks Department and the Fire Department, to try to bring forward some workforce housing that would meet some housing needs for our community while at the same time work towards creating safer homes. Right now, our ordinance doesn't require that you would put a fire sprinkler suppression system in a single-family home. But with the consideration of granting reduced lot sizes and some setbacks, if that were implemented, we could increase densities, making it cost-effective for the developer but in turn would lower the prices of those home sites to meet a housing need for our community. As a part of that, there's also been some discussion with the city Parks Department about creating a park-a-park that the city would eventually own and maintain. So we're excited about the prospect of meeting a need in our community and seeing that developer has been open to working with the city on meeting some of those important needs to ensure that with reduced lots, we're still meeting the needs of the residents in the future. The phasing plan, the preliminary subdivision plan before you today is for Phase One A only. That's the commercial lot that's two point one five acres in the very northwest corner and then the eight point five nine acre multifamily lot that's directly south of it. The balance of that development may change in some form or layout but the concept is there to show us that it would be phased and that street connections would be created through the development meeting the needs of the Infrastructure Design Criteria Manual. Again, this is the lot layout and reminding you that we're only looking at two lots today. This is looking south on South Valley Drive in its current condition. Please note that portions of this property are outside the city limits and I've got an aerial here that I think should help us see that. Can you see the yellow line? That goes like this. Currently, that part of the forty-eight acres is outside the city limits and this side is inside the city limits. The application before you today is to annex the balance of it. Please note that a requirement of the city is that if you're plating adjacent to the city limits, it's required that you annex in before a final plat is approved. Now we'll go back out to the outdoor pictures. There we go, South Valley Drive looking south, South Valley Drive looking north. Please note that the intersection of South Valley and East St. Patrick Street is currently signalized. This is looking east and you can see a little bit of Highway forty-four, west into the site, looking east, looking more southeast and looking more south into the site. The preliminary subdivision plan set before you today is with stipulations of approval as per the Infrastructure Design Criteria Manual for the improvements along South Valley Drive and along East St. Patrick Street. There's also standard stipulations that you will see about water data and sewer data and drainage that will come in with the construction plans which would be the next phase of the development. The applicant has submitted exception requests for the master plan to waive improvements along South Valley Drive, East St. Patrick Street, Highway forty-four, and Elkvale Road. Those have been approved in part and denied in part. The request to improve South Valley Drive and to leave it in its current condition was denied by staff. The applicant has appealed that decision and that will, that exception will go before the Public Works Committee next Tuesday and then council will hear it at their following city council meeting which happens to also fall on a Tuesday. So within two weeks, we should get that issue resolved. The annexation that we have on the agenda today does not currently include the right-of-way for South Valley Drive. The applicant has indicated to us that he would like to amend the application to include that right-of-way into the city as a part of this. Because that doesn't require legal publication requirements, you do have the authority to grant that and to change the application today to include South Valley Drive as it abuts the forty-eight acres. Best practice would be that we defer this back to staff and staff review it and bring you a full recommendation. As you saw, South Valley Drive isn't currently constructed to city street design standards. However, the real issue is, what should that improvement be? And if we put that annexation along with the exceptions as to what council determines should be appropriate for this development onto the same agenda, then the decision can be made. Are these improvements needed and should we annex it? And that goes to, if there's improvements needed later, then it would come upon the city to make those improvements. If it's in the county, it would go to the county to make those improvements. So the applicant is going to speak to this item next and request that we include the right-of-way. You do have the authority to do that. There is some benefit in having all those discussions heard at one time before the city council and again, it would keep the applicant on a tight timeline. I think in the spirit of trying to continue to work with the applicant on a great project in this area of our community that we feel that there could be some benefit to keeping this project going. So again, it will be up to you when you do take action on that item. If you've got any questions for me about the specific stipulations or process I just explained, please ask.
Thanks, Vicky, we do have that speaker request form from Hanny Shaffey. Just a point of clarification, are we looking to take items two and three at the same time? Or should we vote on each separately?
Let's wait and see what Mr. Shaffey has to say to see if we've got issues to resolve as we go through them.
Okay. So we'll call this on item two for the time being.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good morning, members of the commission. Thanks, Vicky, for the great presentation. Couple of things, you know, we've been working with, as Vicky mentioned, with the staff and the Parks Department, the Fire Department to really come up with a project hopefully that will provide product exist today in the market and help bring some workforce housing to the community. As far as South Valley Drive, which is an item number two, couple of things on South Valley Drive. It's classified as a collector as Vicky mentioned. The, we submitted the request for an exception to waive any improvements. Currently, the city standard specifications or the city design criteria manual requires the collector to be either a minimum width of twenty-four foot or thirty-six foot and requires curb and gutter but also it allows for rural section which has road ditches on the side of the road. The existing road is approximately twenty-three to twenty-four feet wide depending on where you measure it and it has road ditches on both sides. The road ditches on our side of the road are very small and we intend to improve those if the road stays the way it is. The road ditches on the south side, apparently they must be capable of carrying that drainage. If we do improve the road, then by adding curb and gutter may create drainage issues on the south side of the road. Furthermore, the signal has been installed at the intersection with St. Patrick Street which adds tremendous cost to relocating the signal to accommodate a three-lane road instead of the existing two lanes. There are new handicap ramps that are installed at the intersection too. Those will have to be removed and reinstalled. We don't mind, you know, improving the road if it is needed. You know, currently, the road has not seen really a lot of traffic and our development, the traffic is really split as you've seen into two entrances. One goes into St. Patrick Street and the lesser impact traffic goes into South Valley Drive which is the mostly residential traffic. So therefore, our increase in traffic is actually percentage-wise is very small compared to the existing traffic that travels South Valley Drive. If the city chooses to improve South Valley Drive, we don't mind, you know, with the exception, which is what we would require or request of the city council is that we sign a waiver of right to protest future assessment like every other application that came before the city council for such a variance or such an exception. I have not really, I've been working with the city on a lot of projects and to my knowledge, I have not really seen any project that came up that an existing road, you know, of similar status like this or similar classification has been improved by the developer as part of a subdividing. The city has gone in a lot of places and improved existing roads similar to this and we anticipate that if it ever needs improvement, you know, which I really don't know when, that the city will do the same as part of reconstruction. And if they assist the property owners, we would be paying our fair share like everybody else and we'll sign a waiver which will prevent us from resisting any assessment of such improvements cost. That's as far as South Valley Drive. I realize you cannot act on that exception. It goes straight to Public Works and into the council, so I don't anticipate anything. This is just for information only. As far as the annexation, we, you know, as Vicky mentioned, we worked with the staff and there was some hesitation about accepting that right-of-way into the city. Currently, by annexing this property, both sides of South Valley Drive will be annexed in the city and it will be kind of not good to really have properties on both sides that are within the city limits served by a county road. Meanwhile, you know, we are taxpayers within the city limits. I think we should be represented by the city and the city should tax us as they wish for that road because the city cannot do assessments on roads that are outside the city limits. So that will allow the city the opportunity to assess those costs if they do improve the road. So we would really like to have that South Valley Drive, I think from St. Patrick Street, South Valley Drive right-of-way from St. Patrick Street to, I think it's Blanche, Blank Street, to be included in this annexation. Currently, we are actually in the city limits and we would be served by a road that is in the county and we would be served by water and sewer from Rapid Valley Cemetery District. And incidentally, on the district, they don't pay oversized costs for water mains and sewer mains and they have existing water mains that are eight inches surrounding the property. They asked us per their master plan to install a twelve-inch within the property which may not be needed. I cannot tell you if it is going to be needed or not needed. We agreed to install that without any oversized costs. Typically, within the city limits, you get paid for those oversized costs but we think we can make it, especially with having that much commercial. Hopefully, we could make up the difference in cost. The goal is to keep the cost down for this project. So any abnormal improvements, which South Valley Drive would be actually abnormal improvements, you know, would add to the cost of those lots that we intend to keep hopefully around the thirty thousand dollars which we really don't have any lots within the community that are newly platted that are within that price range. Thank you.
Thank you. I got a question up from Kurt. Yeah, for Hanny, the multifamily, I assume that's going to be apartments?
Potentially, yes. We're working with, you know, not to lie to you, we're working with a nonprofit that may use it for a less intense use than an apartment complex.
Okay, and you're gonna, but the access to that multifamily lot and the commercial lot would be South Valley Drive, correct?
Yes, sir.
You know, it's kind of hard to predict, you know, the amount of usage that South Valley Drive is going to increase. Right now, you know, there's only a few houses down there and the traffic is pretty light but if you put up, you know, eight acres of apartments there, that could potentially be quite a bit, a large increase anyway. And my other question is, what's the right-of-way width supposed to be for a collector street?
Sixty-eight feet.
Okay, and it is sixty-eight feet right now, right?
We will be dedicating all the right-of-way needed from our side to make up the sixty-eight. I think currently, there is sixty-six feet.
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five, and we'll be dedicating the needed right-of-way. As far as the traffic, we actually, you know, even though this development, you know, this phase may not require a traffic analysis, we actually did commission a traffic study and to see what kind of improvements. And as part of that traffic study, we actually have to do the traffic counts. And just to give you an idea, when we do those traffic counts, we really don't go with the existing current volumes that are just published by the city, by the traffic counters. We try to figure out the peak hours and we did, I didn't have a chance to do the PM, but this is the AM. As you could see on this, the traffic on St. Patrick Street is actually the high volume and even though, that's compared to South Valley Drive, just to give you an idea. Currently, this is a traffic count in two hours. With South Valley Drive fronting the property, going west is a total of approximately a hundred and fifty-nine cars total in two hours, which is seventy-five cars. This is in peak hour traffic. This is counting traffic, actually, that was yesterday morning between six o'clock, no, I think between seven o'clock till nine o'clock. You know, we, staff gathered at six to organize. We had four people counting this intersection and forty-four and St. Pat. We have to try to count all the movements. So you could tell from this that the movements on South Valley Drive currently as it exists are very small, you know, very low counts. By putting apartments, potentially even the worst-case scenario would be about a hundred apartments. You know, the peak hour for those apartments are basically approximately a hundred cars or ninety-five cars for the peak hour. So ninety-five cars on South Valley Drive really does not really trigger, you know, any expansion for that as far as traffic. Adding curb and gutter, you know, there are different theories in that. If you look at the South Dakota School of Mines, it's actually adding curb and gutter does not provide any safety because if it does, you know, Highway forty-four does not have any curb and gutter most places. Elkvale Road does not have any curb and gutter. So it's like, it's a drainage-related issue. And if you look at adding curb and gutter to this road, unless you really lower the entire road by about a foot, you're going to create more drainage problems, especially on the south side for the existing homes than what you solve. And I don't think this project could sustain rebuilding the entire South Valley Drive. So it's, and as far as also the drainage, adding curb and gutter, in my opinion, to every street creates a lot of water quality issues because you're taking all the oils and silt and sediment and sand that we use with the streets, going washing it down the storm sewer and then all of a sudden, we have to hire more staff to clean up the pipes, clean up the endless. And having that water also unfiltered in most places going into Rapid Creek, which is a fishery. You know, on the other hand, if we have curb and gutter, which is what state highways do and a lot of other even high-end communities do, then the water gets filtered before it goes into the creek. And this area is very close to the creek relatively speaking. So I, in my opinion, adding curb and gutter is not in the best interest in this scenario. If the city chooses to add the curb and gutter later on or if they wish to even add it now, we'll be more than happy to pay our fair share of adding such an improvement. Thank you.
Thanks. So what you're asking for us to do is approve this without that stipulation?
No, actually, you can't act on it, you know, because it's an exception that was denied by the staff. So it goes to the council, thus currently the procedure that is in place. The only thing that I'm asking, requesting of you folks is basically to add the right-of-way of South Valley Drive between St. Patrick, I think it is a Blanche Street. Blanche Drive, you know, if we could incorporate that into the annexation petition and I apologize for the confusion, thank you. That's the only thing that I'm requesting.
Thank you, I don't have any other questions. Karen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think some of this is for staff. I understand, Hanny, what you're saying and so my question or my comments really have to do with the annexation and I apologize if I'm going to step into that role and we're not really on that item. But since we're discussing this, when we annexed that area down through South Valley Drive, part of the issue was South Valley Drive itself because some of the lots that we could annex, we could annex halfway through South Valley Drive. Some of it, we could annex the entire piece of South Valley Drive but the rest, we could not because it was that unplatted properties that the county said no on. So we elected not to annex any part of South Valley Drive at all because it would be discontinuous. We'd have pieces of it that would be in the city and pieces of it that would not be in the city. And so I guess my thoughts are, the fact that this is at the beginning is not so bad. It's not discontinuous through the whole South Valley Drive but still, you have the maintenance issues of the city would be responsible for the first parts in the, in the street light if that should have to be changed and those kinds of things. And I know we have some back-and-forth things. We could have the county take over those pieces that, you know, they do now but trying to understand whether that's a good thing for the city or not. So let me ask a question, Vicky. The other side of South Valley Drive that is in the city, next to Hanny's property, is the entire piece all the way down so that we could annex the entire piece of the road?
Let's take a look.
South Valley Drive north of St. Patrick Street is all in the city limits.
Right.
All the way up.
Right, yeah, I'm talking about south of that.
So our city limits would go down past my aerial.
Okay.
So all of this is in the city limits today.
Gotcha. I just couldn't remember exactly if we took in all those lots on the left-hand side or not.
This would actually be filling in that void so that we would have then everything, all the way off this screen anyway, that would all then be in the city limits. Because this currently is here, this is, and all of this is.
Okay, so he's, Hanny's annexation request is not to annex just the road adjacent to his property but farther down? And I'm not sure Blanche Street is...
His property, remember, his master plan shows that he's bringing in a development for all of this.
Right.
So he's asking to annex in right now all of this area right here, past the preliminary subdivision plan. So that street is right here. So it would be just along the east lot line, excuse me, west lot line of the area that he's currently requesting to annex in.
Okay, so it just does stop at the end of his property?
Correct.
Okay, that's...
thing was is, they wanted to see, without resolve, they wanted to see three paved lanes, and they wanted to see curb and gutter and full-street improvements if it's not annexed. That really triggered our discussion as to whether or not it should be annexed so that we've got the council reviewing what improvements should be made in addition to whether or not this development is appropriate inside the city limits. So the area that would be added on would be adjacent to the area that's currently being annexed or requested for annexation today. And the counties indicated that they would not oppose the city annexing that right-of-way.
That I believe, because I think the county always wanted us to annex the whole street. So, so are you saying, Vicki, that right now the counties in their mind are thinking about making that whole road a three-lane road?
I think there's actually a project that they've got out to bid or putting out to bid to resurface it. Their contention was that as they looked at this development, that if it were to stay outside the city limits, they would want to see it improved to collector street standards, or annex it into the city, do one or the other. As a part of plating it, it's required to be built to city street design standards, a collector street, or an exception must be obtained. So the discussion for that exception request should be before the city council. I think Hanny did a great job. I'm going to call it a dress rehearsal for the Public Works Committee meeting. And we have a liaison sitting in our, here at Planning Commission, and I'll rely heavily on her to share a lot of that information along with Hanny to the council when it goes forward.
Okay. So if, if the street is not annexed, the county would like to see it a three-lane, that's what they're saying?
Correct.
But can they stop the annexation of the rest without, I mean, do they have any, any real say in what we're doing? If the council agrees to?
Council acts on it to approve it, then it can be annexed in without the county's approval.
That's what I'm saying, yeah. Okay.
If I may add?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
If I may add, you know, some of the comments from the county are basically, it's either you do it as a three-lane, or we're not going to grant you, since it is a county road, reading through the staff report. I left messages to the county highway superintendent, actually, at least four times to meet with him, and they never called us back. And, you know, that type of, you know, treatment, I really don't want to deal with it because it will delay the project. Because if they cannot call back, what makes you think that they're going to even respond to anything else? They're saying that they're not going to grant any access to that road if it is not upgraded to three lanes. Just to give you an idea, that's a collector on the city master plan. The county cannot even require that to be upgraded to three lanes because their standards are twenty-four-foot road without even curb and gutter, you know, except for one of their classification for a collector road to be twenty-four. There are currently existing roads just across the street that are actually gravel roads, and they don't have even forty-foot. I'm not advocating doing that low. And I'm saying is basically, folks, to have this development happen in a timely manner, it has to be a right-of-way within the city limits. It would be unfortunate to have a property that is annexed to the city that is not served by city utilities, that is not served by a road that is within the city limits, even though all properties fronting that road are within the city limits. So I really encourage you to include that right-of-way into the, to, into this petition to annex. That way, it will be treated like every other right-of-way within the city limits. I really don't want to go study the county standards. I don't do work in the county. I tried to do work within the city limits as much as I could because I want to consistently do the infill properties. This is an infill property. There are 25,000 people that live east of this area that are mostly contiguous or within the city limits. So this is a gateway to the community. We're trying to do it right. Yeah, if it is in the county and it stays in the county, we could develop it in the county and still do less intense development. That would be a lot less, you know, gateway-like community than what we're proposing. And this is identified in the city's master plan as a gateway to the community. So I encourage you to really include that right-of-way. Having the county putting the ultimatum of like three lanes or no access, I have not seen that anywhere in any government. You know, I realize that is not legal, but, you know, it takes months to go fight battles like that, you know. And, you know, this is going to be in the city limits. There is no reason to go have it. The goal is to provide the community with, with a good project, you know, with workforce housing that is within a range that does not exist in the community. So, thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Hanny. I guess, just to sum up my thoughts is, I'm wishing that the Public Works guys would be here to kind of answer some of those questions. So I'm trying to decide whether we should continue that portion just to get some input from staff on, on the annexation itself of the road. Down the road, I think that that's that donut hole that we've always wanted to, you know, it's discontinuous from the city, that whole piece down through there. And, and I've always wanted to see the whole thing brought into the city limits and, and South Valley Drive improved to, to city standards that would be perfect, whether it's the borrows or the curb and gutter, you know. But at least that road be improved. And I think some of the citizens out there would like to see, see the city have that street also because it's been a kind of a sore spot with city and county, I think. But anyway, those are my comments for now. Thanks.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I would, I think it's safe to assume that on behalf of Public Works staff, the real issue here isn't whether or not the adjacent right-of-way should be annexed. It probably should be. It's really whether or not the street should be improved as a part of this subdivision. The way that this is structured, as our items come out of Planning Commission and go to City Council, and because Hanny diligently appealed those exceptions and got them on that same City Council meeting as this preliminary subdivision plan item and the annexation item, the council will, on their agenda, review that exception appeal before they get to the annexation item and the preliminary subdivision plan item, the way it's structured and set up on the agenda. Public Works Committee items will come first. So they'll have that opportunity to have a full discussion. If they determine that improvements are made, are needed, they will potentially act on that exception, denying in part or approving in part. It may be that they will grant the exception in its entirety, determining that this development doesn't trigger that improvement at this time. It still may be in the best interest, if that's the position of council, that the adjacent right-of-way be in the city limits. I think that we are going to be in a position where the three items will be considered at the same meeting with final decisions being made by our elected officials. And that might be a win for both the developer and for the city as a whole, where we're considering, what are those improvements, right along with, should we annex it? So the timing just kind of meshed together very well.
Thanks, Vicki. Mike?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. The lot sizes, for one, are they, how do they compare to a mobile home lot or such? And then, as I look at East St. Pat, it looks like we are going to not allow left-hand turns, which may affect whether or not either the city or Hanny. By the way, Hanny, thank you for all you do. You do a lot of things for the city, and I appreciate that as you develop, make these developments. But with that, I think it forces some of that traffic over to that, the South Valley Drive because they want to go left. And so I think that should be looked at at the time, and whether it is a city or, or Hanny's, the developer's responsibility, it's something to be considered as, as you move forward. Because as I see it, there's seventy-three lots, single-family, or single lots with some kind of a development on them. Plus, if you put in an apartment building as to what Kurt had asked, and whether it is an apartment building or whatever it is, you're adding a lot of traffic over to there. So it should just be considered in that whole talk.
Mr. Chair, if I might?
Yeah, Vicki.
Wonderful comments, Mike. Just as a reminder, the preliminary subdivision plan that's before you today is just for the commercial lot and the multifamily lot. The balance of that as a master plan, and as it notes in the staff report, that that's kind of fluid right now. We've seen a couple of versions. We know we're going to probably see some additional changes as they finalize it. So we've indicated that approval of this preliminary subdivision plan does not indicate approval of the master plan. The concept, yes. We also identify in the staff report that as this development progresses with phases and density, that it will trigger that traffic impact study. And it acknowledges that it was difficult for Public Works staff, when they reviewed the exception request presented to them as a part of Phase One, to do so with full knowledge of what is going to be impacted because we didn't have that traffic impact study yet. It wasn't required, was as a part of Phase One A. But of course, for us to make the best decisions possible, it's the best tool that we have in the toolbox when we can look at a traffic impact study. I'll let Hanny speak to the lots and the traffic issue. But just remember that for today, we're reviewing just the two lots, and it's not indicating approval of that master plan.
Thanks, Mike. The, that's a good question. On the St. Patrick Street entrance that is off of St. Patrick Street, we met with the State Highway Department, and the traffic engineer is evaluating that entrance. Currently, there is a left-turn lane that is already built to accommodate that entrance. The highway or the DOT did not have any issue with it because it meets all the separation requirements. Currently, the distance between that entrance to Highway Forty-four is approximately a little over 600 feet, and it's close to 600 feet from St. Patrick. The required distance separation for the street design criteria manual is 200 feet. So we're approximately three times the spacing. Still, we actually asked the traffic engineer to study the required improvements at that intersection, and if there is any safety concerns as far as that entrance goes, that way to make sure that it is done properly. But currently, the anticipation is that entrance will be a full movement intersection. The current traffic counts on St. Patrick are actually very low, if you compare it to other collectors and other arterials in town. Currently, you know, you all know that the west side of the area, west of, or on the west end of St. Patrick, west of this property are about almost eighty percent developed, you know, you know, because it did ends at West Boulevard. The traffic counts on St. Patrick, you know, last year was approximately 10,500 cars a day. The year before that were 9,500 or 9,400, actually. I think the traffic counts are on your agenda tonight as, I mean, today as one of the items. This year, they actually went down back to 9,400, and those fluctuate. So that tells you that St. Patrick, as far as traffic counts, is very steady. It may be going up or down depending on what construction zone, zones that are existing around that area, which may direct traffic to one way or another. So, you know, hopefully, the traffic will be going in that predicted split where we don't really impact one street more than the other. The, as far as the lot sizes, we actually have the subdivision drafted, meeting all the requirements for the city, which is for a lot, residential lot, which is a minimum size of 6,500 square feet, minimum frontage of 50 feet. We wanted to work with the fire department to really bring in a different concept. That's our, actually, one of our preferred. But, you know, the fire department suggested, you know, a new concept that we could narrow down the lots to cheapen the lot cost, which we hope to add, or add that to the savings that we're passing to the customers because there is a certain amount of margins within this. So hopefully, with the narrower lots, that we could add more lots, which will pass on to the customer. Either concept will work. If they're not a mobile home lot, we're not intending mobile homes. This will be actually not cheap houses or not poor quality. No, there will be actually high-quality homes with high safety margins. Actually, you know, working with the fire department and Tim Billings, we hope that we could bring in a safer aspect to the existing homes than what is there today by doing the subdivision and still maintain the price at a low price. So that's what we're hoping to do. But it's not a mobile home lot, no. It's a lot bigger than that.
I'd like to have a free-flowing discussion, but I want to get back to the two lots today and the annexation. So let's try to concentrate on that. Carla?
Thank you. I have a comment on the annexation. I know we're technically on two.
Yeah, that's fine.
But it's related to three. This is not to hold up the annexation for moving forward, but just to alert the Planning Commission and the city council members in the room that there, we're going to need to look at the other side of South Valley Drive and see if that was annexed previously with the, along with the lots that were annexed, or if it was excluded. And if this annexation petition gets us the whole road, or only gets us half the road, or we'll have to do some historical work to see what happened in the past. This is something that Sarah and I had flagged, but we didn't really look into it because the annexation petition didn't include the road. But now that it does, we'll have to resolve whether or not this would be effective to get the whole road in the city or not. Pretty much, the only rule about voluntary annexation is that you can only do it to your own property. And if there's right-of-way on the adjacent property that hasn't been annexed, then we'll have to, we'll alert the city council to that issue and address it moving forward. But I just thought I would raise it with this group to let you know and to let the applicant know that that might be an issue.
That actually kind of brings up a question, just for clarification. The, who, who would ask for the rest of, the other half of the road to be annexed alongside the property that we're talking about today, as well as, there's apparently road to the south of that that is not annexed, but the property on each side is already annexed? What, what happens to that half-road and then whole-road portion if we suggest annexation of, of the half that we're talking about today?
So I guess I'm going to pose this question to Carla. So if an applicant comes in and there's adjacent right-of-way, can they request to annex the entire right-of-way or only half of the right-of-way?
I think, like I said, that they can only annex the part of the right-of-way that's on their property or connected to their property. And so you can't annex somebody else's property. So if the property, if the right-of-way was annexed previously, then it's not an issue. We didn't look at how the South Valley Drive issue, it was complicated annexation. And I'm not sure if, Karen indicated that possibly the right-of-way was just excluded from the annexation at the request of the county. I need to do some looking. And certainly, the property owners, if the right-of-way is dedicated over their property, could ask to have it annexed in. I'm not sure if it's a possibility for the county to make the request to annex it. And these are questions that kind of we had in the back of our mind. But now, now that this is part of the petition, we'll have to look into.
Thank you.
So I think that if we do go forward today with the caveat that the South Valley Drive right-of-way lying adjacent to this property, that can be requested by the applicant, be included on the petition, as to what that width is, is it the whole right-of-way, is it part of it, if Mr. Chappie walks in here with county concurrence, that they would let it go, whatever that happens to be, I think we can have some answers going into city council that would assist them in making sure that we're doing it legally and that we've got the necessary approval, yours being one of them, as well as any property owner that would be affected, including the county.
What, what would the action that we would take here be then? Would we agree to have the half of the right-of-way that, you know, borders this property included in the annexation request? Or would there be a different?
So if we said something along the lines of that the annexation petition be amended to include South Valley Drive right-of-way located between East St. Patrick Street and Blanche Drive for that portion that the applicant can legally request, be added to this, and it could be at the end of that review, it's determined it can be the whole right-of-way, depending upon how those were plotted out and how things were annexed in. We don't know today because this kind of came at us at the last hour. So, but we could get those answers resolved and clarified going into council. So, but we could get those answers resolved and clarify going into council and revise our graphics to demonstrate exactly what portion of that right-of-way would be included.
If I may add.
Hanny?
You know, just east, immediately east of this development, we have another development called Orchard Meadows subdivision. And as part of that subdivision, we had to petition to annex a portion of the service road to allow a traffic signal to be installed. And, and I believe the city attorney's office tried to check who signs the petition for that right-of-way to be annexed. And since it was a service road that is not actually fronting our property, because there is railroad right-of-way in front of our property. The DOT in that case signed the petition without the concurrence of the property owners fronting that frontage road. And that was accepted, and that portion of the right-of-way was annexed. In this case, we are requesting that right-of-way. But to make sure that we are capable of doing that, yesterday, we have actually a petition that, that we dropped off at the county for the county to sign the petition to do the annexation of this portion of the right-of-way as a security measure. So the county, the folks at the commission's office, they took the petition, and they were going to check if the highway superintendent is capable legally to sign the petition. And if not, it goes to the county commissioners meeting on Tuesday, the 21st, at 9:00 in the morning. The city council meeting, because of President's Day, is Tuesday at 6:30 in the evening. So hopefully, that petition will be signed. And if there are any issues between now and then, the city attorney's office will make us aware of them. So either we pull that portion of, you know, of the petition out, or we continue it at the city council if we have to. But we, our wishes are not to continue it because this project is under a time schedule as far as development, because we really hope to start working on this because there are some actually, furthermore, there are some grants that are dependent on this eight acres being platted, and it has to be final platted before the end of March.
Okay. Thank you. Can I just ask Carla, the idea of including the right-of-way with no further, you know, description along this property, do you think if the commission feels that it's important to move this part of the project ahead, is that something that you think works as, as a, without reservation or, or, you know, any reservations can be brought up at city council? I'm sorry, I didn't explain that.
No, that's all right. I think if, if we amend the petition to include the right-of-way that's adjacent, I think that's fine, just recognizing that the only part of the right-of-way that can actually be annexed is the one that's under this property's control. I think that's, that's fine if that's the, the way that the planning commission amends it.
Okay. All right. So, sorry about that detour. Galen, do you have any?
Thank you. So I'm, I'm going to try to get some motions out here to keep this moving. So the right-of-way amendment is independent or doesn't affect item number two, correct? So should we, or are we considering these together?
I think at this point, we should just consider them together. We've discussed them together.
Okay. So let's, so let's consider items two and three, and I'll move to approve those with the amendment to include the right-of-way along South Valley Drive from St. Patrick Street to Blanche Street. That section that the applicant is available to annex.
Mr. Chair, before we get a second, if I could make a friendly suggestion to the motion maker?
Please do.
That the preliminary subdivision plan be approved with the stipulations as identified in the report?
Yes.
And that the petition annexation be approved, amending the legal description to include that portion of the South Valley Drive right-of-way located between East St. Patrick Street and Blanche Drive that's under the property owner's control.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Galen made the, the motion, as Vicky just stated. Karen seconded that motion. Further discussion on the motion. Karen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. When we wanted to annex South Valley Drive and, and the whole area through there in that donut hole, we wanted to annex the entire thing. The issue that, that, the reason why we didn't get South Valley Drive in there was because when we went to annex that area, anything that was unplatted, the, the unplatted properties own half the road. The platted properties only own their plats. And so when we wanted to annex and the county, because there was unplatted properties, the county said they didn't want us to annex the unplatted properties. That meant that we could annex only those people that, that had the plats, which didn't include that road. And so it left that road crazy, kind of, you know? If we wanted to plat some pieces that were platted, that we could annex half that road, we couldn't really. And so we decided, it was the city's decision at that time to say, well, then, to have that road where we have half the plats and not half the plats on that road, we decided not to annex the entire road. So I believe, and, and I'm glad that Carla says we need to double-check it because my memory is not that perfect, and I can't remember exactly which was platted and which wasn't. So I think that, that the fact that this is right off of the St. Patrick Street and goes down as far as Hanny's property is concerned, I think that, at least that's appropriate if we can annex both pieces. If at the time when things are checked and it goes to city council and we can only annex half that road, then I'm, I'm sure that, I shouldn't say I'm sure, because who knows? But I would think that the county would let us annex the other half. There'd be no reason why they shouldn't do that. And in the past, I know, once the cities acquired some properties on both sides of the road, we have gone back, this has been several years ago, but we have gone back and actually had an annexation for just the road itself. So I think there's ways to do that, but I just wanted to clarify the reasons why we didn't annex that whole road.
And, and Mr. Chair, if I could clarify, the, the county, the Pennington County Highway Department provided comments that basically said, annex the right-of-way, this right-of-way in, or build it to collector's street standards, and if you don't annex in and you don't build the road, we're not going to provide you access. So they've indicated that their support of the annexation. We realize that it may take some authority from the Pennington County Commission to grant that signature, and it appears that Hanny's working on meeting those obligations. I, I think you're right. We, we need to do a little research on whether or not that signature is needed, and then all of that will go before the council. And, and just a reminder, as to whether or not the city staff will support that annexation with that right-of-way, will come from the discussion regarding what street improvements are required. Because if it's, if the improvements aren't made, and then it is determined that this development has issues, then it goes to the taxpayers of Rapid City to make those improvements versus Pennington County. So putting all those discussions on one agenda, where the street improvement will be discussed first, and then the annexation, and then the preliminary subdivision plan, I think really sets it up so we have those that are making the final decision, hearing all of the evidence. And thank you guys for letting Hanny vet like he did today on all of the discussion because I think that it'll help the city council understand it better with the representatives we have here as it goes forward. So again, if we go back to the motions on the table, staff would, would be in support of those going forward today.
Thanks, Vicky. Any further discussion on the motions? Seeing none, let's have a vote. All those in favor of the motion on items two and three to approve per staff recommendation on two and item three with the additional right-of-way along South Valley Drive as best stated by Vicky, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The motion carries. So we're up to item number eight.
Good morning. Sarah Hansel with Long Range Planning Department. Item number eight is the resolution of annexation for the Big Sky subdivision. Most recently, the planning commission and the city council have approved the resolution of intent to annex this area. As you may recall, it's about 40 acres that's developed with single-family homes. This item today would begin the second phase of the annexation process to essentially finalize this annexation. So I just wanted to bring this before you this morning. If you had any additional questions, nothing has, from the annexation perspective, nothing has changed since you reviewed the resolution of intent to annex. So staff is recommending that this be approved.
Thank you. Questions, comments from the commission? John?
Actually, at least one thing has changed. And now we're picking up at least a million dollars in costs and whatever we have to pay to the fire department, plus whatever legal fees the winner wants to claim. So yeah, it's a big deal now. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Other questions, comments? Seeing, okay. Karen made the motion to approve the resolution of annexation. Galen seconded that motion. Further discussion on the motion? Darla Drew?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to clarify, the city has set aside money for the repairs to Big Sky subdivision, so that, that part of it really hasn't changed, John. Some of it has, but as far as the money being appropriated for the road construction and different types of corrections to the area out there, that, that money has been set aside for several years, to my knowledge. Thank you.
Thank you. Kurt?
Was that, was that money set aside based on, you know, winning the, the lawsuit that was brought forward and that we didn't, the developer now is not having to pay that $914,000?
You know, I kind of came in, this has been going on for a long time, so that's a difficult question for me to answer, but I do know approximately the figure I've heard is $930,000 set aside for those roads. And that was done a few years ago. Those prices have probably changed, but we do have some money, you know, that is set aside for this project, specifically win or lose. Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Opposed? Was it John and Kurt with the no's? Okay. The motion passes with two no's. Item nine.
Item number nine is a petition for de-annexation for a 20-acre tract of land that is located south of St. Patrick Street and southwest of the current terminus of Settavi Lane. Just to take you through some slides of this application. Here you see the existing zoning for the property, its own flood hazard district, as well as general agricultural district. Here's an aerial view of the property. It's undeveloped, as you can see, and it's located directly adjacent to what we refer to as a jurisdictional donut hole in Rapid City. It's right on the periphery of that area, which is a priority area to annex. Here is the future land use showing low-density neighborhood and the major street plan showing this property in context to the surrounding area, showing East St. Patrick Street to the north, Settavi Lane to the east. And some site photos. This is looking from the property north towards St. Patrick Street. This is a view looking out over into the property to the west. Here again, looking southwestern of the property. And then this is adjacent east. This is a sod farm that is located directly adjacent to the property. And here, exiting the property, headed back towards St. Patrick Street. So staff has reviewed this petition for de-annexation with the de-annexation policy that we have in place. There are seven factors for this particular request for de-annexation that do not align with the city's policy for when might, when are appropriate situations to de-annex and when aren't. I will note that this property has been inside the city limits since 1973. It was involuntarily annexed at that time. Due to its location within such close proximity to that jurisdictional donut hole and with the city growing around this property on all sides, staff is not recommending that this de-annexation request be approved. And I can answer any questions or discuss anything further that you may have.
Thank you, Sarah. Do have one speaker request from Sylvia Conrad, but I believe it's to answer questions if needed. But you're, you're free to speak if you have things to say as well.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that question.
I have, I have a speaker request for him from you, but with the note that it's if there are questions, but I just wanted to let you know, you're free to, you're free to speak as well if you'd like to. I personally don't. I just, I want, just wave if you feel the need. How about that?
I have a question. I don't know how this works. Did you get a copy of my letter? Oh, did you get a, I can't, I can't hear over here. Did you get a copy of my letter and the packet?
We've got, we've got it up top here.
Good job, good job, staff. So, well, good morning, and as I said, I, I got up awfully early to meet a whole new group of friends, so, but I appreciate your dedication. Okay, did you, did you have a specific question for me?
I don't. Karen might.
No, I, I don't. I just.
Okay.
Okay. Is there anything I can explain about my request that would be helpful to you?
Any commissioners? Not at this time. We'll let Karen ask staff something or make some comments, and if need be, we'll call you back if that works.
Thank you. For me, the fact that this is within the donut hole, I just, I, I feel strongly that we shouldn't de-annex this property, and that's my main reason, and I'm going to make a motion to approve staff's recommendation.
Okay, Karen made the motion to deny the resolution for de-annexation. Is there a second out there to this motion? John seconded the motion. Discussion on the motion? I do have one question, and I guess this is from Ms. Conrad. It appears from your letter that you're intending to put this into agricultural use. Why the need for de-annexation to do that?
Well, for two reasons. One, I've owned this for 18, 19 years, had these unattainable desires to do something that because of access, floodplain, whatever, and that I was going to grow grapes, and I was going to have a tree farm. Well, I never did go buy a plow or get started. This is definitely an agriculturally-based use. And if it can be combined with the land for the South Valley sod, sod, sod farm, which is south of this property, it would continue to be a productive piece of property, and there really is no better use. And the man that just recently purchased the sod farm, it would like to lease this, cut down those horrible trees, and use it for sod production. I don't see this ever being a part of the city because of the floodplain and the access down Settavi. There's just too many problems for it to be here. You just couldn't develop it into anything else. But it's a beautiful sod farm. When you go down there and look at it, it's green, it's lush, and it's productive. And a lot of people need sod. As we continue to grow, there's going to be more requests for that. If this 20 acres, and there's only 13 that they could farm out of the 20 because of the crook and the bank and so forth. But if it could be productive and give residents that are building new homes that are building new homes another sod production element, and why not have it in the county? The street is not even annexed on the east side of Settiville. It stops at the Open Bible Church. So everything's in the county around me except on the west, which is obstructed by the creek. And if you could see that big siphon which was in the engineering letter, you'll understand that there's a real obstruction as far as getting adequate sewer at a cost most people could have. So it just belongs in the county. It belongs to that piece south. This man will continue to be a sod farmer for years, and I don't see how that land could be productive or give the community any better option than what I'm asking for. And to have it de-annexed would put it, put all of that land in the county. And it just makes sense. It doesn't make sense to have a city line across a piece of property that's going to be a sod farm, to me. Now, I bow to the power up there, but to me, this all should be a continuous piece of farmable county property because there is no city sewer available. There are no city, unless I bore under the creek, now I was told, and I don't think that's an option, but I'll let you decide that. So I really think it makes sense to me, to the community. So I, I really do ask that you consider having this a piece of the sod farm, hopefully, at least he's planning on moving forward with it, and put all of his ground in this little hunk that is kind of a dangling paraciple out there into the county so it all blends.
Thank you. Vicky?
We do thank Sylvia for sharing with us what the intent is of the land. Please note that currently, the western portion of the property is on Flood Hazard District. The eastern portion is currently is on General Ag District, and a sod farm is a permitted use in both of those districts and would be a legal use in the city as it stands today.
Thank you. Galen? Further discussion on the motion on the floor? Seeing none, the motion is to deny the resolution for de-annexation. All those in favor of denial, please say aye. Aye? Opposed? The motion carries. Discussion items, staff items? Yeah, we have a staff item. Didn't know if you had a discussion. All right. Parks and Rec, item 11.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Planning Commission. The Parks and Recreation Department has been working on a master plan for Robinsdale Park over the last year. Had multiple public meetings on this. We've hired a design consultant to assist us in looking at this park, the history of this park, and the long and short-term planning of this park. This was the former landfill for Rapid City, and we want to ensure that any future developments that we do out there adhere to keeping that landfill intact and not doing any destructive improvements to that that would affect the health, safety, and welfare of any park user out there. We've done things at the past in that park that we've had to remove because of its deterioration due to being built on the landfill, so we want to ensure that we don't do that again. This master plan is a 20-year update of a previous master plan, and the reason it came about is there's major stormwater improvements that are coming down the line, as well as road improvements that are coming down the line, and we wanted to ensure that any work done in the park would still meet the needs of that park in the short term as well as the long term. That park is 120, 12-acre community park as well as a regional destination park. It's been serving the Harney Little League for about 70 years, if not more, and we want to ensure that Harney Little League is accommodated there as well as the BMX facility that's, that's been there for so long. And we've had a lot of public meetings with the community at large in that neighborhood, and they have a very strong input on what they want there and what they don't want there, and that's reflected in this plan. And I believe we'll see a lot more of these park, park master plans in the future, and I think it's the right process to go through, to get the public input at the parks level and then bring it through and deal with Planning Commission, planning staff, as well as engineering staff for any subsequent development that we do there. So right now, we're asking that this Planning Commission sponsor this to be a part of the city comp plan, and I've listed in that memo that I provided several rationale and goals that this, this plan meets, and it's several. So I'll take any questions at this point.
Thanks. Just procedurally, if we sponsor this, then we see the actual master plan come back through as it would be for an area of town, another area of town?
You are correct.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from the commission, comments? Seeing none, anybody want to make a motion? Karen?
I think that Robinsdale Park is a really nice place for that area, the community is large, there's so many things you can do with it, and I'm glad you went out and got some public comments from that because people who use it really need to weigh in on that, just as we do all the parks in our city. So they're, they're a gem in the city, I think, all the parks. So I'm going to make a motion to approve the request to sponsor the comprehensive plan for Robinsdale Park.
I'm giving it to Galen. I heard him first. Karen made the motion, Galen seconded that motion to sponsor a comprehensive plan amendment for Robinsdale Park master plan. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Anything further today? All right. Motion to adjourn? All right. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? We're adjourned.